I'm doing right now to turn your phone or pager, you can call the pager, God bless you. But, uh, turn it off at this point. And, uh, with that, I'll ask Mr. Hogan to lead us in pledge allegiance to God for a welcome.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Forgot that little thing beginning to... All the way. All right. Mr. City Administrator, do we have any announcements or presentations this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Didn't think we did. All right. City Clerk, we have approval of the amendments, uh, City Council Public Hearing Work Session, May 12, 2016.
Motion to approve the amendments as submitted.
Second. Very good. We have motion of second. Is there any discussion? Motion of second then to approve is submitted. All those in favor? That passes. Four opposed. And abstention from Tom. Uh, through the minutes, City Council Regular Meeting, May 17.
Motion to approve the amendments as submitted.
Second. Very good. Is there any discussion on this item? Very good. Then we have motion of second, uh, to approve the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes. As I believe, uh, they were, uh, they were submitted or amended, correct?
Yes, there was a correction made after the meeting.
Yeah, so I read that in the draft minutes. So it was as submitted and amended. Is that what you intended?
Yes.
Very good. So we have motion of second then to approve the City Council Regular Meeting Minutes as submitted and amended. All those in favor? That passed unanimously. Uh, City Manager, consideration of intergovernmental agreement with Shandley DDA.
Motion to approve the IGA to secure debt with the DDA as presented by staff.
Second.
Any discussion? Very good. We have motion of second then to, uh, to approve, uh, the intergovernmental agreement with the DDA as presented by staff. All those in favor? That passed unanimously. Next item on the agenda, then Development Department, we have one, consideration of rezoning request, uh, 3413 Catalina Drive, Etol, Shandley Village Park.
Motion to deny.
Second.
Very good. Is there any discussion on this item?
I have a, uh, question if there's anyone here representing the, uh, buyer or seller.
No.
Sorry?
Okay.
Nope.
What's your question? We're on the, uh, C1.
We received a withdrawal request from the applicant. Quinn just was trying to get a understanding as to why and if, um, there was an intention to bring this back at a later date.
Uh, the applicant no longer has property ownership contract.
Well, the applicant is actually the property owner. You're aware of that, right? Very good. We're gonna move on. So I've got a motion of second then for the, uh, denial, consideration of zoning requests. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? Four opposed? One. Uh, C2, consideration of variance request, 3413 Catalina Drive, Etol, Shandley Village Park. We have, uh, a list of variances.
The Police's Council, can we take all these requests at one time?
Go right ahead.
Uh, motion to deny.
Second.
Very good. Any discussion? So we have motion of second then to deny, uh, C2A. Approve J, which includes, uh, variance one through ten. All those in favor? Four in opposition. One. Uh, the next one is consideration of development community impact, 5208 Peachtree Boulevard.
I'll make a motion to approve as recommended by staff and with, uh, for variation one, but to deny variations two and three.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't see that on the agenda as being separated out. I guess because it's just variations, Gary, is that right? Okay. So is there a second to that motion? Hearing done, that motion will die, it'll only go...
I'd like to make a motion. Motion to approve with all of the, um, staff recommendations. There are no, um, the Architectural Board recommendations and to also to include during construction, the applicant shall install a vent to allow potential cafe restaurants to use in the future. The applicant agrees that the structural support system of the building shall not prevent the expansion of the depth of the currently planned 20-foot-deep retail office commercial use portion of the building in the future if the market demands change and such modification is desired by retail office commercial market and property owner. Third, the rear elevation will be substantially similar to the site plan emailed to Mayor and City Council on June 16, 2016, and include it in the record.
Second. Any discussion? All right, then, go ahead, Tom.
I was just gonna say, do you have specifications of them that you're asking to put in?
Let's just do...
What's the...
Yeah, okay. I, yeah, I'm not gonna try to... All right, so then we have a motion of second then to approve, uh, 5208 Peachtree Boulevard as recommended by staff and with the, um, uh, conditions that Councilman Robson just read out, but I assume that you have written down, because you read them very well as you gave them, City Clerk. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Four opposition? One. All right, uh, the next item, number four, 5211 Peachtree Boulevard, as I mentioned, on, uh, Thursday evening at the work session, public hearing, I have a potential for a conflict on this particular item, so I will turn it over to Mr. Mock right now and...
Let me know when it's over. Can you be quick? Don't go far.
Well, it got hot on Thursday. I had to sit in my car.
2016 DCI 04, 5211 Peachtree Boulevard, mixed-use development. What is the pleasure of this council?
Motion to defer to the June regularly scheduled meeting. I'm sorry, to the July regularly scheduled meeting with an additional ARB review as agreed to by the applicant.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to defer to the July regular scheduled work session. Any discussion? All in favor? Four in opposed. Can somebody fetch the mayor?
You were right. Don't go far. All right, when I got a second, it's over. All right, very good. All right, moving right along. Next item then is, uh, item five, which is 1965 and 1989 Deering Circle, Ashford Place.
Motion to defer until the July regularly scheduled meeting. That would be the work session and request that the applicant meet with ARB to discuss the facades of units front in Deering Circle and the unit and the unit on lot one, which side faces Deering Circle.
Second. Any discussion on this item?
Have you discussed this with the applicant and their willingness to meet with the ARB?
We have discussed and we have discussed the exact motion. It is... We can't force them to...
Okay.
I'm sorry. Mr. Councilman Mock asked if I had discussed that motion with the applicant, and I said we had discussed, uh, similar items, and he further asked if they were required to meet with ARB, which I thought that it was a request and that we did not require them to go back to ARB.
Is there any discussion on this item? So we have motion of second to defer till, uh, the July work session, uh, with conditions that Darren spelled out for us, and I hope that's all written down, because I don't care about those. All those in favor? That passed unanimously. Uh, the next item is approval of intergovernmental agreement with City of Dorville, Beaufort Highway, LCI.
Motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Dorville, Beaufort Highway, LCI.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? So we have motion of second then to approve, uh, the intergovernmental agreement with City of Dorville for the Beaufort Highway, LCI. All those in favor? That passed unanimously. Thank you. That's awesome. Uh, the next item on the agenda is approval of a consultant for Beaufort Highway Livable Centers Initiative, which also known as LCI study.
Motion to approve Canvas Planning Group as the consultant for the LCI study of Beaufort Highway as recommended by, I guess, the staff.
Second.
Committee and staff. Any discussion on this item? No. Very good. All right, so we have motion of second then to approve, uh, Canvas as the consultant for the Beaufort Highway, uh, Livable Centers Initiative, AKA LCI. All of that one, huh? Along with Dorville. All those in favor? Passed unanimously. All right, Police Department, we have consideration of a resolution changing fees for work permits at adult entertainment establishments.
Motion to approve resolution changing the fees for work permits for adult entertainment to $75 as recommended by Chief of Police.
Second. Discussion?
I'd rather be in over. Okay. Then I'm gonna make the question.
Substitute motion.
Substitute motion. Motion to approve a resolution to set, uh, changing the fees for work permits at adult entertainment establishments to $100.
Second. Very good. Any discussion on that item? Okay, so we'll pick up that one first and see how it goes. We have a motion of second then to adopt a resolution changing fees for work permits at adult entertainment establishments and set the rate at $100. All those in favor? That passed unanimously. So then I think that it's important to pick up the other motion before they just kinda run off somewhere and sit in their tradition card. All right, Parks and Rec, nothing, yeah, for finance. Good job Travis, nothing on them. G for Public Works, still haven't figured that one out, but we have acceptance of a bid and approval to award a paving contract.
Motion to approve the applicant award the paving contract for an amount not to exceed $500,000 to fully construction and engineering as recommended by staff.
Second.
Any discussion on this item?
I just have one question. The bid was for $405,000. Are we, are you recommending $500,000 just because there might be an opportunity to do other projects with them already out here?
I believe in them. The $500,000 as well was budgeted. The, uh, we do have one change order for that project already, which was for testing materials testing.
Yes.
So the $500 can compensate for any overages or other things that can come up?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Is there any other discussion or questions on this?
I have a little bit of discussion for some of the landscapers, so, you know, I'm looking at the trees and everything, and I noticed that they have already chosen the lacemark elm as the, as the chosen tree. I feel that we're getting a bit saturated with those elm trees, and I'm wondering if maybe we can, down the road, when time comes to choose trees, maybe discuss choosing a different kind of tree. That's all.
Okay. So a motion of second then to, uh, accept the bid and approval award the paving contract as recommended by staff. All those in favor? That passed unanimously. Uh, still under Public Works, to approve disposal of surplus vehicles and equipment.
Motion to declare the schedule of vehicles and equipment as surplus and authorize their disposal via public service government auction as presented by staff.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? All right, we have motion of second then to approve the disposal of surplus vehicles and equipment as recommended by staff. All those in favor? That passed unanimously. Nothing for economic development, uh, boards, authorities, and committees. I don't think we have anything tonight. All right, City Attorney.
Motion to allow the City Attorney to read headings only.
Second.
So we have motion of second then during the reading ordinances to allow the City Attorney to read headings only. All those in favor? That passed unanimously. All right, Joe, first reading of ordinances, we have 3693 Clermont and 1959 and 1965 Bragg Street.
That's correct, Mayor. This is to amend, amend the change in zoning classification of those three parcels, 1965 Bragg, 1959 Bragg, 3693 Clermont Road, neighborhood commercial in C2 to corridor commercial condition, and the amount shall be changed accordingly. That would be the first reading of that one.
Thank you. And then I believe we have several items underneath the proposed UDO text amendments.
We do, Mayor. First is, uh, number 2016 TA 05, its ordinance to change some provisions in Chapter 300 subdivision development standards and procedures concerning building permits for multi-story buildings and mixed-use buildings, as well as specifications of standard development documents, subdivision in development standards and procedures, another provision to delete certain text in sections 300-68 concerning final plans. That would be the first reading on that, Mayor. Next, with the Development Department, orders number 2016 TA 06, as to amend the UDO concerning streets gating guidelines, uh, typical, or typical street sections, um, should be attached to exhibits to, uh, show the changes. That will include, uh, typical streets gating sections for primary, secondary, and meter streets, also for illustration of local streets in NR1, NR2, NR3, street skating guidelines, illustrations of local streets in NR2, also with respect to typical curving details, which is attached as exhibited. Those exhibits are attached to the ordinance. That would be the first reading on that. Next is 2016 TA 07, changes the UDO with respect to certain definitions, specifically flight school defines that, and then changes the table of permitted and prohibited uses to include that flight school. Also changes table of permitted prohibited uses to insert a new row for art shops as defined in Chapter 6, also inserting a new row for performing arts center, inserting a new row for dance center, and also rego for a restaurant providing kuka, whatever that is. And then, um, change to Chapter 240, certain use standards concerning local family dwellings. And I believe that's the one more issue on that, Mayor. That would be supplemental use provisions for restaurants concerning indoor seating opening, and that would be the last substance of that ordinance. The rest of it's a separate building clause. Next order is 2016 TA 08, concerning buffers, landscape, and tree protection, amended by editing the text for the definition of critical root zone. Also, standards applying to all projects is amended, such that projects qualified as development community impact or planning development are prepared to stand by state licenses to architect. Also provisions of Title III concerning buffers, plant materials are required in the buffer set to appear, as well as plant ratios and layout of the buffers, park floors, development permitted, also buffers that concerns all street and service park block planting requirements. Vehicles being separated from side doors, part five is for landscape regulation changes on street and service park block payment requirements there also amended. Title III development permitting is amended by editing one of the paragraphs to, prior to causing impacts to limit 30% of critical root zone, developer property shall obtain approval of property owner boundary trees located and developed permitting this on certain specimen trees as revision to Title III, Part IV. Further, part eight of this, amendments to tree preservation replacement regulations concerning trees planted in park blocks as opposed to islands. And also part nine, development permitting tree, tree density requirements is changed to use rather than the formula analysis provided for this, known as Amendment 2.02, the procedure described in Section 329 of 1999. And the last section, substances, change to pre-preservation replacement regulations concerning density of species. That would be the first reading on that. Next is orders 2016 TA 09, it's also land use and zoning and standards applying to all districts, these side regulations. Provisions concerning edges, fences, and walls are amended concerning prior offenses, channeling security offenses. Under Chapter 260, the sign regulations, temporary then signs is amended concerning duration and size of such signs, as well as number of location. Part III is also about sign regulations concerning size, height, and setback requirements. Basically, concerns visibility clearance and sign height restriction of driveways. Part IV, also sign regulations that concern building signs and certain restrictions that they are subject to. And Part V, more sign regulations concerning variable message board signs, automatic change will copy. The rest of that is a separate building clause. And I think we got a couple more here. 2016 TA 10 is ordinance to amend supplemental use standards on street parking standards, stacking spaces to drive through facilities. The first section is supplemental use standards concerning sales or rental establishments to drive into facilities. Second part concerns sales or rental establishments to drive through the facilities as opposed to drive in. And then Part III is off-street parking, loading standards, changing the number of parking spaces required. That is basically concerning wheel bumpers. Part IV is off-street parking, loading standards for wheel bumpers and how they are reconstructed and their minimum length and height. Part V is off-street parking again concerning stacking spaces to drive through facilities. So any of those, the service dedicated to drive in service to those. Section 24013 is additional location design standards to drive through service areas. And then Part VI is a table with, uh, parking spaces required for art shop restaurants providing group of events center performing arts center and flight schools, which we address in the earlier warrants. That's the substance of that one. This is the last of the first readings. This is 2016 TA 11, it's to amend the UDO concerning standards applied to all districts. And basically, the first section deals with improvements entered required, yards against that. Part II, conventional standards and so many setbacks are amended, and that is by illustration which is provided in Chapter A. Part III, amends section 2A or Chapter 2A, insert a new sub句 concerning storefront memo for ceiling height. And Part IV is a separate building clause, so there's some of that. That would be the last of the first readings, Mayor.
Very good. So then, excuse me, so then we have some second reads, uh, other consideration of proposed UDO text amendments, or we still have headings only?
Okay. The first is 2016 TA 01. This is to, uh, change some of the definitions, deleting certain definitions and adding certain definitions, including accessory building, heights building, present building, private ground, like high establishments, pre-development, and that would be all of the second reading of that. Do you want to do this as a mass motion, or do you want to do it one at a time?
What's that? No, I think we could just, we could take them one at a time, take them all together? All together is the correct...
All right. The second one is, uh, ordinance concerning edges, fences, and walls, corner visibility, city design, store for streets, provisions in Chapter 230, standards applying to all districts, changes some of the maximum purchase service percentages in certain roads or the conventional standards in some of the districts. Part II is paragraph to delete certain text and renumbering. Part III, standards applying to all districts, minimum street frontages changed in sub句 three, 20-foot wide accesses, but now instead of through. Part IV, the zoning provisions concerning edges, fences, and walls, how they shall be constructed, brickstone, stucco, or wood. And then Part V, standards applying to all districts, fences shall be followed in provisions that must be constructed in solid materials, shapely and prepared as, uh, as you can, plastic. Part VI of this ordinance is corner visibility, it's on corner watch, concerning shrubbery and how it may determine all this triangular area formed by the intersection of driveway lines at two points. It sounds a little too much like geometry to me, but anyway, it changes the distance from 25 feet to 20 feet. And then the provision for Chapter 230 concerning city design, sidewalk level uses for street frontage or storefront sheet, or only use for restaurant sales, or any other merchandise equipment that is not equipped to drive through the facilities. And that is all of the second reading of that, Mayor. Next is ordinance 2016 TA 03, as, uh, general use regulations permitted and prohibited uses, uh, changes some of the uses that are allowed, manufacturing operations, craft breweries shall be permitted, craft distilleries, keeping about animals as a accessory use, veterinarians, and then supplemental use standards. Part II, concerning residential, among family residents, that would be amended to provide for the minimum heated finished floor area for multiple family dwelling units to be 650 square feet or studio, 790 square feet, or 250 square feet or 300. And supplemental use standards concerning residential, among family, concerning common walls and common floor ceiling units must be constructed to be a sound transmission coefficient rating of 50 or higher. And then Part III, supplemental use provisions concerning craft breweries, craft distilleries, and then street drainage or storage and parking. And that would be all the substance of that, Mayor. The rest of it is separate building clause. And then the last one, I believe, is ordinance number 2016 TA 04, it's concerning, uh, amendments to UDO concerning infrastructure, streets, and sidewalks requirements for these streets, perfect gutters, provisions in Chapter 350 concerning infrastructure, says that private dwell should be maximal 20 feet or 20 feet. Part VII, infrastructure, streets, and sidewalk curving is amended, language that into there, the staple of concrete you have to use and so on. Part III, it provides in Chapter 240 supplemental use provisions, private streets is amended, and those are prohibited except where necessary and subject to approval by the City of Andrew. Provisions in Chapter 240, supplemental use standards concerning private streets, easements of private streets, and that paragraph, which includes lanes and space, etc., private streets used exclusively 2% of land they touch, attached dwellings shall be constructed on easement with a minimum of 40 feet together. And that is for the rest of that, orders. That's the second reading of all of those.
Motion to adopt UDO text amendments, 2016 TA-01 through 2016 TA-04. Motion to adopt UDO text amendments, 2016 TA-01 through 2016 TA-04.
Second.
Very good. Is there any discussion on this item? All right, we have a motion of second then to approve the ordinances as read by the City Attorney. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. All right. Councilman Mock, you have a fallen officer's memorial under your name?
I do, sir. I'd like to make a motion to approve and accept the donation of a fallen officer's memorial that outlined in the package as stated due to June 16, Councilor.
Thanks.
Very good. Any discussion on this item?
Is this for placement at future time according to the, yes, the part master plan?
Yes, thanks.
Any other discussion? Very good. We have a motion of second then to accept the fallen officer's memorial as stated by Councilmember Brian. All those in favor? That passes unanimously. All right, citizen comments? You have three minutes. Come up, tell us who you are, where you live, what's on your mind, going once, going twice. All right, Mr. Hogan?
Just wanted to remind everybody that the Shambly Chamber of Commerce meets here in the same room on Thursday morning at 7:30, and our speaker this weekend, this month, is the COO for DeKalb County, Mr. Zach Williams, so I encourage you all to come.
Thank you. And, yes, sir?
Good evening, Shambly.
Very good. Got to find a mic that's easier to turn on. All right, do you just give us your name and address to the city clerk, please?
My name is Brad Dallas, and I'm at large within the City of Shambly. I have a request on behalf of the business that I represent, which name, good by Southern Elegance. We have the tow trash bins and a blue recycle bin, and what I would like is an additional recycle bin that's got the wheels and the blue top on it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Gary, come up and make sense of comment.
I got one more thing.
All right.
Some of you may already know this, but I got an email this afternoon from Concha Reed, who is the daughter of the owners of Mason Robert, that they will be closing for good on July the 14th, going out of business. Nothing's wrong with the family, but they're just tired. So if you want to get you some chocolates or anything, they have about two weeks before they're out of business.
Thank you for pointing that out. Any other comments? All right, do we have an executive session this evening? No? Very good. Any discussion?
I'm sorry, who had the second?
Leslie did, I think. I don't know if Darren was close, but Leslie was just louder. So a motion of second, yes, got to buy the lip. Motion of second to adjourn, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Thank you all for coming out tonight.